Seattle Century Agenda process, and I'm turning it over to Commissioner Albro. Well, excellent. That was even easier.
Well, first, let me just say thank you for having us. We're going to do something that's probably a little unusual. We're going to go right to video because it's going to help us kind of explain what we're here to talk about, and then Commissioner Holland and myself will elaborate on a couple of points. But really, we're here to have a conversation in public about something that we've been working on at the Port of Seattle for a considerable amount of time. So if you want to play video, then I'll get started.
For me, the Port of Seattle is an economic development entity. Ninety percent of our sales are export, so we're very dependent on the Port of Seattle and the port infrastructure.
Just think about it. A hundred thousand new jobs generated for the people of Puget Sound.
For the past 100 years, the Port of Seattle has been working hard for the people of our region. Now, the port has launched a visionary plan to expand economic opportunity here.
So it's very important that we have a roadmap of where we want to go, but that we remain flexible in the way we get there.
Our roadmap is the Century Agenda, a 25-year plan to stimulate economic development while remaining committed to social and environmental responsibility.
We're in three businesses where projects that typically take years, maybe 15, 20 years, to complete through planning and development and so forth. So if you want to fit those into a strategic framework, you necessarily have to have 25-year plans.
You know, I look at the boats and the planes and the fishing vessels that represent the port. One, they're cool. But more than that, they represent a dynamic northwest culture that's unique. We are all about connecting to the rest of the world. We're about our environment. We're about entrepreneurial activity. We're innovators. We're manufacturers, and we love trade.
We build a better community by giving everyone a chance to work at what they do best. And so far, the port has helped create 200,000 jobs, but we're not done yet.
We were looking at what we could realistically do if we were to increase the seaport by about a third, and if we were to significantly increase the traffic, both passenger and freight coming through Sea-Tac International Airport. And we thought it was realistic, looking at the assets we have at the airport and the seaport, including our fishing terminal and our cruise terminal and our recreational facilities, that we could increase the jobs related to the Port of Seattle by 100,000.
We must also remember that we live in a world of challenges and competitors.
Ninety percent of our sales are export, so we're very dependent on the Port of Seattle and the port infrastructure. Without export market pricing and those opportunities, the economy of rural farm ground and farmland in this region would be much different than it is today for all products, not just hay products.
Up north, we have the Canadian government that's put over $1 billion into a seaport that's attracting trade from Asia. The Panama Canal expansion in 2014 is going to be significant. Other developments in Mexico. And then just around the West Coast, the investments that communities and ports are making to maintain their jobs.
We will reach our jobs goal while reducing our environmental footprint by becoming a premier international logistics center, by advancing the region as a tourist destination and convention center, through promoting small business and workforce development, and by becoming the greenest and most energy-efficient port in North America. Because none of this matters if we don't preserve our environment for future generations.
In the 21st century, the Port of Seattle has to be committed to both, the economy and the environment. Why? Because ports offer opportunities for industries that by their very nature have an impact on the environment. We have to help those industries and help the communities figure out how to balance the great jobs and balance the environmental impacts.
It's a huge economic engine for our region, small business opportunities in our community.
Environmental stewardship's going to count for a lot.
Washington State's economy, King County's economy, the nation's economy is really at a turning point.
So that's probably the best introduction that I could give in terms of what we've been up to and what we're working on for strategic initiatives at the Port of Seattle. This has been something undoubtedly that has been going on for some time through citizen panels and subject matter experts. We've been doing this in public session over the last year. But we feel it's important as really your port, because all, we're the Port of King County, and we're here to help stimulate jobs and economic activity throughout the county, in fact, throughout Washington State. But we feel like it's important to get your input, your feedback, and really your help in engaging on this, because it is way bigger than the Port of Seattle. It's really a regional initiative in order to bring these things about.
Just concurring with Commissioner Albro, it really is going to be a regional partnership. As you know, as he said, that the Port Authority District is the entire county. Sometimes we always say that there's sort of a misnomer to name it the Port of Seattle, because truthfully, it is the Port of King County. And we're getting taxes from, a tax base from all over the county. And we're leveraging these assets for citizens all over the county. And particularly for a city like Renton with a large population, major city, major economic driver itself in the county, I think it's important for us to ensure that our goals are aligned, hopefully, with your economic development goals. And so some of the things that we've said in the Century Agenda video that you might have caught, over the next 25 years, we want to produce 100,000 jobs. And we know that that 100,000 isn't necessarily what we as a Port Authority are going to produce. We have 1,700 employees. We're a government agency. It's not our job necessarily to be producing those jobs. It's the job of small business people, manufacturers, and entrepreneurs to be producing those jobs. And we know that those folks are not only in the Seattle area, but also around the county. So one of the things is we want to do, produce 100,000 new jobs. And as the video said, both the Port of Seattle and Tacoma both produce 200,000 jobs. So you can tell, you know, how important our activity is to the state of Washington, quite frankly. Some other issues here, we want these goals to be ambitious. And I think you will see that through the handout that you all were given. I'm not sure if we've given that out. You'll see an opportunity to see that. You'll see how ambitious they are. And we wanted to set a benchmark that will benefit, again, everyone in King County. And everyone, we believe, should have access to good jobs, as I know that you believe as well. And the kind of jobs that enable families, enable folks to raise families, put kids in good schools, and put their roots down in a community, which has definitely been the story of, I know, this community with the manufacturing, with Boeing and Paccar. And so the question is, how do we get there?
So as we lay out in our Century Agenda, we have four major initiatives. And the first of them is to kind of move from just purely handling cargo to more of a logistics hub concept. And the idea, really, when you think about logistics, I mean, that is a term that gets thrown out a lot and is understood a little less well. But the way I think of it is, if you think about any kind of a supply chain, there are points or nodes of activity where things either go from one means of transport to another, or they get assembled with, into another, joint with other components. What we want to do is, out of that whole supply chain, harvest nodes of activity and aggregate them here in our region. And so, you know, when you think about what's necessary to do that, well, we need to maintain the port infrastructure, the sea cargo and air cargo. So you'll see efforts there, the warehousing capability, and really support the logistics enterprises that are already here. And when you think about what manufacturing is today, both Boeing and Paccar and others, I mean, that is a great example of an aggregation of a bunch of components coming from different places and being assembled into a big value-added, you know, manufactured element that then gets sold overseas again in many cases. So it's one of the things that we can do. You know, on tourism, it's, that's probably something that is often overlooked. You know, most tourists that arrive here, many of them come through Sea-Tac, and many of them also go on a cruise to Alaska. Well, those are two businesses that we have a lot to do with. And, you know, our question is, to ourselves and our challenge, is how do we double the economic value of the cruise industry to Washington State, just to take you an example? And so you'll see that as being one of our, that's our challenge. We want to do that. It's to the state as a whole. It's not about the city of Seattle. It's about Renton and Woodinville and Yakima and Walla Walla and all those places. And in order to do that, we essentially have to attract people to stay a little longer, shopping a little bit more, and eating a little bit more. So that is one of the reasons why we're part of the Washington Tourism Lines, among other things. It's also about making sure that Sea-Tac Airport is a West Coast gateway of choice for travel from Asia particularly. So you'll see more and more emphasis on our part in the international inspection facilities, customs. We know that's an area where we're going to have to make a significant investment. You see us recruiting international airlines. We want to double the number of international destinations and double the number of international flights coming into Sea-Tac. The city of Los Angeles and the airport of LAX published numbers a few years ago indicating that for every new international flight that they added to LAX, that brought with it $750 million of local economic activity, every, just every flight. Now that, I can't vouch for that number, but let's just say that only 10% or 20% of it would be true for us. It's a very significant thing. And when you think about what we need to be doing in order to anchor businesses here and enable them to grow in a global environment, well, it is connecting these businesses to the rest of the world and the rest of the country. And we see Sea-Tac as being absolutely vital for that, and we're committed to making sure it's going to meet our air traffic, our air travel needs for the next 25 years, which we're confident we can do. We have the airfield capacity to do that. So it's really, what do we do on the land side?
Just a few things that I may, Commissioner Albro, for example, one cruise ship brings in about $1 million into our economy. I mean, it's massive versus, on average, a container ship bringing about $600,000 to our economy. So you see how major the tourism side of the business, the business is. And again, trying to keep people to stay a little longer are either on the, as they're coming in or coming out, and come see Renton.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So just to be clear on that statistic, just, is that a single stopover of a, of a single cruise ship generates a million dollars? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, one cruise ship, yes.
Excellent.
And again, people are starting to, you know, and this is more what we need to work on, you know, people are starting to stay a little longer and start to ask for other places to go and see. And so we had a great meeting with Woodinville and with the wine industry out there. And of course, we want to have more of those meetings take place as well, too, getting people out of downtown Seattle.
Thanks.
You can only go to Pike Place Market so many times.
Yeah.
The other part of that is, I think you saw, some of you were at the Emirates event, which was well done. You know, you just look at this. I mean, right here at Seattle, right up the road here, 20-something flights directly into the continent of Africa, 20-something flights in the Middle East and into India. This is, this is excellent, not just for tourism, but, but just think about all the connections we have in relation to the business that people in our, in our state want to do. But one of the things that we have been always challenged with, and, you know, I noticed as coming in the City Hall here, your, your plug-in station for, for your electric car, which I don't have at this time, maybe one of these days I'll be able to drive up and plug in. But environmental concerns have definitely been something that we've kept focus on. And when our CEO, Teo Shitani, came to the port about four years ago, one of the things that he challenged was for us to be the cleanest, greenest, and most energy-efficient port in North America. And I want to say that I think we've, we've done a lot in that regard, but clearly, you know, as you know as policymakers, there's always challenges and more to do. And so you'll see in here that we definitely connect sustainability, environmental sustainability work and efforts with our Century Agenda goal, and keeping in mind that it's a triple bottom line, that, you know, those environmental and sustainability goals do wrap themselves into our business bottom line, which is to make profit for, for the public.
So, you know, when you, when you think about just the cost of doing business, one of the costs that we know and we embrace is environmental stewardship. So some of those goals that you'll see called out there is not only are we looking to grow our, our total cargo through the seaport, we're looking to do it, and at the airport, but we're looking to do it without actually increasing the total energy usage. So when you, when you think about what that is, unit of carbon or unit of energy consumed per unit of economic activity, that's, that's really a challenging, a challenging goal. And we're committed to it. It's also about environmental restoration. And we know that there's significant habitat opportunities for improvements along the Duamish and other LA Bay waterways. And so we'll be continuing to focus on that. These are, these are massively expensive things. They can be extremely disruptive to other business activities. And the art of it all really is balancing it out so we can be achieving the economic ambitions that we have for our region and doing our part in that, and also stewarding the environmental footprint and helping, over time, to make it smaller. One thing that we absolutely are committed to is keeping industrial and manufacturing uses here in the urban areas. There's a lot of pressure, particularly in Seattle, and sometimes it makes the news, to displace a terminal, you know, let's, let's just move that someplace else, or manufacturers outside of the urban areas. And what that essentially does in most cases is take a bunch of environmental impacts that have already been made, that are fully, that we're fully aware of, and it just moves them to some other place. And by the way, in order for logistic centers to work, in order for trade hubs to exist, you need a lot of infrastructure connections. And so then you end up putting governments in places where they have to start, you know, creating more off-ramps to freeways, you know, sidings for railways. And it just, it creates just a cascading number of investments in order to supply the kind of connections that you need for those industries to exist. So we believe strongly that it is in our state's interest for Seattle to remain a seaport, and be, and we see the seaport as an anchoring of the manufacturing industrial complex that's not only in Seattle, but in the region.
One of the areas we know is workforce development is going to be absolutely critical. And I think you have one of the more finer, higher education, Renton Technical College, higher education institutes in the state to help with that. And I don't have to tell any of you about that sort, that institution. I had a wonderful opportunity to tour that about two weeks ago. And the programs there that are very targeted toward employment, which is very important, very key, and opportunities for people who are unemployed to retrain themselves and find themselves in pretty high-paying professions in regards to, you know, Boeing and other manufacturing. This is exactly what we're talking about. These are, these are exactly the kinds of institutions we want to partner with, and basically help lead the way for a new workforce.
So this is really, I think we've taken exactly, we thought we might spend 20 minutes presenting it all to you, and hopefully leave 10 minutes if you, if you have the interest. We would love to just engage in discussion. Our big challenge is, one, making sure that this reflects your ambitions, that you see something in here, and a lot of things in here, that you think are good for the region and good for Renton. But really, okay, so we've got 25-year strategic goals. That's, there's a lot of work to do. We have to roll up our sleeves. We have to get to work. And that's not just, you know, you know, the Port Commission or, you know, the city of Renton. It's the whole region. And we really need to get your ideas and frankly, your commitment to roll up your sleeves with us and help us bring this about, along with other things. I think they're going to be important for our region.
Any questions from council members?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albro.
Yes, Tom, thank you for a very clear, concise, and bold presentation. Just a couple of questions. Just curious, and I know that 25 years out, we've got a lot of track there to absorb some revenue. But in the interim five years, what does your revenue stream, what are they looking like based on current streams and projected streams through the various revenue sources that you're getting your funds from? And then also, forgive me, I've got a little cold. Also, as you talked about increasing the international flight capacity, which I think is very dynamic and very exciting, especially when you talk about bringing, you know, those populations of individuals to our region, which will create that additional revenue. You mentioned that there was already some existing capacity at Sea-Tac. Is that correct, or would there have to be some, when you say existing capacity, is it already built out? Is that going to have to be built out, and is this a part of that plan also?
Yeah. If I can start with the second one, it's, because it's a little simpler answer. The other one requires a more of a crystal ball. So many of us had heard a few years back that we were going to outgrow Sea-Tac by, you know, whatever that year was. And if you, that was based on a set of assumptions and a general equation. Essentially, it was looking at what's the airfield capacity? I mean, how many flights in and out of Sea-Tac can we handle in any given day? And once you start, if you look at the components of that analysis, the size of the airplane matters a lot. And so a bigger airplane takes up just as much airspace as a smaller airplane. So what we have seen over the last decade since we last, first heard, started hearing those numbers, is aircraft have become larger. The second thing is, well, what's the load factor? How many seats in that airplane are actually full? That, we've also seen a significant increase in. So we see load factors. I think Alaska Airlines last year had a little over 82% of their seats occupied on, you know, across all their flights and all their, their destinations. So when you take those, those new numbers and you plug it into the old formula, Sea-Tac can double its total passenger throughput on the air, on the airfield side. So, so we recognize that our challenge, we have the capacity in the three runways and the taxiways to handle the passengers. Our job is to get people there, to handle them efficiently, to have baggage systems that will work, transportation connections. So that's why you see us a huge fan of light rail and extending light rail south. We're big fans of 509 being completed, those kinds of things that are going to improve the accessibility of the airport to the region overall. So that's, that's what we mean by, by that. In terms of our, our prognosis for revenue streams and others over the next five years, we're just really kind of coming up with that. So we took the 25-year goals. We thought, okay, the commission needs to say, this is, this is where we want to go. And now we're going to, with our staff, agree on five-year milestones. But is, so it's, it's in the works now, and we have draft milestones of where we want to be in five years. Seaport side, you know, the, a lot of these things kind of bounce on the, the waves of global events, you know, the worldwide recessions, new container ports opening in other areas. And so it's pretty hard to get an idea of what our volume would be five years from now through the seaport. What we do know is if we, if we focus not on a particular volume of cargo, and instead, what do you need to do in order to cause this seaport, our local market, our manufacturing base, our region to be attractive to cargo, then you start getting back down to things that government can start, we can really key in on, you know, extending 509 and completing that, dealing with, making sure that cities that have a lot of warehousing in them have enough revenues that come out of that land use to pay for the transportation infrastructure that's required. So that particularly, of course, affects you to some degree, but your neighbors, our neighbors to the south more. So it's those kinds of things that we, as a port commissioner, are going to be trying to focus on. And then, of course, as soon as you identify that, you have to say, well, that's, geez, that's not something that the port can actually fix. And so that gets us to, you know, we need coalitions. We need the existing coalitions, hopefully, to see this as something that can work to further their interests. But also, I think, some new efforts galvanized around the pursuit of some things that government can do to set the, set the stage for businesses and jobs to come.
Just a comment. I want to say that I really do appreciate the anticipation of thinking more innovatively in terms of what we need to do to expand, you know, our, you know, port and, and view of the expansion of the Panama Canal and some of the competitive issues that it can bring. And I thank you guys for moving in this direction. I think it's a great idea.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Don?
Just for our audience, listening audience a little bit, I didn't understand the significance of the Panama Canal being widened until we talked, I think it was Bill Bryant we had lunch with, and he explained to it. And that coming up in 2014, how much of an impact do you think that will have on you?
Well, again, it would be tough. I mean, we don't necessarily have a crystal ball. But, but one thing we are aware of is that, and I've seen this myself, is the investments that are being made by the ports that are along the Gulf Coast and the East Coast. You know, just for example, Houston has put over $1 billion of new infrastructure into their port facilities in preparation for taking our jobs into Texas. And quite frankly, Miami is, is doing the same with a very ambitious project similar to the Alameda Corridor, where containers will be able to get off vessels and go directly to rail and head out to what are considered sort of inland ports, where they can sort of re-stage and, and direct to different parts of the, parts of the country. Something that we don't have here at the moment, as far as capacity. So, and the other piece of that, council member person, is the, is the potential for Mexico, too. And this is going to be one, I think, will be a big challenge for us. But I would say to anybody, I think our toughest challenge is to the, is to the north, which is Prince Rupert. And the money that has been put into that system, and the thought, quite frankly, that has been put into that system, as far as the way that you get containers off a vessel, you line those containers up on various rail, and how they get into our Midwest quicker than any box that's going to end up on our wharf in Seattle, day, two days earlier, potentially, in some cases, $500 less or so. That's, that's very much a concern. And I think that is why we are here in talking to you and talking to the community and informing people, as you have been informed and all of you are being informed now, that it's going to be a partnership between both the Port Authority and cities and county and state to, to make this, this, this work. And as Commissioner Albro said, you know, when you start really drilling into it, I mean, it even gets down to just the rail rates for bringing cargo out of the Pacific Northwest. It's quite, it's a little more expensive than even down in LA Long Beach. And unfortunately, that's, that's not a government thing, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a business side of the house. But again, it's something that we have to really address and talk about if we're looking at volume over time. And the last one I'll add, you didn't ask about it, but, you know, even our competition just 30 miles away, that really shouldn't be our competition, in fact, should be a partner with us. And I'm talking about our little brother down the road, the Port of Tacoma. And, you know, I'll stop there, but I know that Commissioner Albro and others are, are going to be having some discussions and conversations about how we, we stopped sort of eating our own lunch in this region and sort of come together and really have a real competitive plan to, to address Panama Canal, Prince Rupert, and Mexico. Because there shouldn't be any reason that this competition should be this tough 30 miles away. And I'll stop with this, because I know you all have lots of things to do tonight. You know, when you look at the shoes and the You know, when you look at the shoes and the suits and everything you have on, and if you're living in Chicago, which, you know, by the way, we're Chicago's port, too, to the Pacific, you don't know the difference between Seattle and Tacoma. Doesn't matter. Just as long as you can go in the store and get your shoes and your suit. And so, we've got to remember that in this region if we're going to stay competitive.
If I can just add, and we're glad to stay for as long as you want to have us on your agenda. Commissioner Holland is exactly right that the ports of Seattle and Tacoma essentially, in a global way of thinking about it, Puget Sound is one dot on a map. Nobody anywhere outside of Puget Sound itself would, you know, distinguish between those two. And in fact, most of the cargo that comes through our seaports is heading for the Midwest via rail. So, what we know is the state of Washington relies on the seaports of Tacoma and Seattle in order to access the global markets for its goods. You know, for the Port of Seattle alone, 51% of all of our exports through the Port of Seattle are agricultural products from Washington State. And that's remarkable. But the other figure is remarkable, too. 49% of our exports are not agricultural goods. There are a bunch of other goods coming from Washington State being manufactured here or coming through here. So, it's a huge thing, and it's one of our advantages over our competitors to the north. We have some disadvantages that we have to work on, but we do have a lot of export volume, and we have a lot of manufacturing capacity, and we have a lot of know-how, and we have a lot of other trends that are kind of working to favor not just the ports of Seattle and Tacoma, but Washington State. And I guess, last thing I would like to say is, Washington State is the only state in the nation with directly elected ports, port authorities. And it's absolutely a remarkable truth. We happen to have 70, over 70 ports in the state of Washington. The way I look at them is, we have 70 directly elected, duly charged, special purpose governments for the sole purpose of economic development. Ports of Seattle and Tacoma tend to focus a lot on cargo, but the Port of Walla Walla focuses a lot on wine-making in Moses Lake, on composites manufacturing and other things. So, across the state, if you think about that we have 70 economic development entities, and they, right now, work quite independently, what if we actually turned them into more of a network? And what if we actually looked at what we could do in order to leverage where we are in history, where we are in geography, where we are in terms of know-how, and really access the global market? We punch above our weight in Washington State, and we can do a lot more. And that's what the Century Agenda is here to kind of help us figure out how to do, and we're really looking forward to working with you.
Excellent. Anything else from council members? Commissioner Albro, Commissioner Holland, I appreciate your time and presentation this evening. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item is the school district impact fee. Raquel will take the lead.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. For the record, my name is Raquel Timmons, and I am here to present requests made by the three respective school districts for impact fees within the city of Renton. We have three school districts that service the city of Renton. The Isaguas School District is requesting an impact fee of $3,568, and that's for each new single-family home. And that would be a decrease from last year of $240. The Kent School District is requesting an impact fee of $5,486, and that would be for each single-family home. And then a $3,378 impact fee for multifamily units. This would be a continuation of the fees that they requested from last year. And the Renton School District is requesting an impact fee of $6,392 for each single-family home and a $1,274 fee for multifamily units. And that would be an $82 increase from last year for single-family homes and a $16 increase last year for multifamily units. The committee was briefed on this issue on February 13, 2012, and a public hearing was held on March 5, 2012. We received no public comments. However, there were concerns raised related to the collection of fees in other jurisdictions that have been serviced by the Renton School District. So, staff has come back here tonight to present to you a brief presentation on information collected by the school district and their attempts to collect fees in other jurisdictions. So, the Renton School District serves the following jurisdictions: unincorporated King County, the city of Kent, C-TAC, Tuculpa, Newcastle, Bellevue, again, that's the last one, and Bellevue. In unincorporated King County, we have the areas depicted in these red circles. They're kind of challenging to see, but they're in three separate nodes, kind of on the periphery of the city. Beginning in 2012, the school district has begun to collect the impact fees that they are currently requesting from the city of Renton in the amount of $6,392 for single-family homes and then $1,274 for multifamily units. In the city of Kent, which is this kind of lower circled area here, right on the southern portion of the city, approximately 4% of that, of the total area of the city of Kent is within the Renton School District. It's currently zoned industrial and then some like commercial, and it doesn't support single-family or multifamily residential development. And because of the nature of this area, the Renton School District is not currently requesting an impact fee collection in the city of Kent. You have to forgive me, the clickers kind of bother me. So, C-TAC, in the city of C-TAC, there's approximately half a percent of the total area of the city within the Renton School District, which is approximately half of a square mile. It's zoned low-density residential. However, it contains steep slopes, approximately 35 to 40% of the area. It only has two developed lots, and there is no current development under construction or proposed. Therefore, the school district is also not pursuing any plans to request an impact fee for a collection of that fee in the city of C-TAC. The cities of Tuculpa, or the city of Tuculpa, the area is quite large along the western border of the city, and that current zoning includes several different zones, primarily industrial and commercial. However, it's important to note that there is a Tuculpa urban center zoning designation in that area as well as a low-density residential. The area currently contains three single-family residences. However, there is a potential for development of mid-rise and/or high-rise office and multifamily development over a retail base within this area. However, the school district has no current plans to request an impact fee in this area, but will, has stated that they will monitor as future or planned development goes on in that particular area. For the city of Newcastle, approximately 42% of the city of Newcastle is located within the Renton School District. It's approximately 1.9 square miles. It's residentially zoned and includes vacant lands that are not encumbered by critical areas, and therefore, potential development can occur. The school district has contacted the city of Newcastle in order to begin the process for requesting school impact fees. And then finally, Bellevue, approximately 1.5% of the total area of the city of Bellevue is located within the Renton School District. It is also residentially zoned. It includes about 26 undeveloped parcels, including several parcels that may be eligible for short plats. The school district has contacted the city of Bellevue in order to begin the process for requesting updates to the school impact fees. So, for tonight, we're really requesting direction from the committee with regard to changes to the impact fee collection and the capital facilities plans for the three districts within the city. And ordinance can and will be prepared and presented for first reading next week with the direction from the committee. And that's all I have tonight. We do also have a member of the Renton School District here to answer any questions. Should you have him?
Raquel, I've got a couple of just procedural issues. So, all of these fees are currently being collected, correct?
Yes.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Not in the amounts listed here, but yes.
Right. And if we don't take immediate action, they don't expire? They just continue to be collected at the rates that they are?
Correct. From what I understand, yes.
Forever and ever, or?
It is, you're required to update them from every year, but it doesn't say that they expire.
Okay, so this is going. Okay, and so then my next question, not so much to you, is kind of just more to my council members, is that this is another impact fees, and we have other impact fees coming from the administration in the near future with, you know, transportation, all that type of stuff. And I kind of lean towards discussing all of those at once. But I also would like to hear from you guys, and I see things, I mean, I'd definitely like, you know, get Isaguas reduction in and that type of stuff. But I'm kind of curious why we're, I'd kind of like to see it all lumped into one, but I'm not wedded to that. Questions or comments from other council members? Ms. Brier?
Raquel, do you have any timing on what the negotiations with Bellevue and Newcastle might be?
On behalf of the Renton School District, I do not, but we do have a representative here from the school district that may be able to speak to that.
You want to give us an idea?
Yes, members of the council, good evening. Thanks for having me here. We don't have, we do not have a specific timeline for that. As I said, and chaired with Raquel earlier, we've begun the investigation and conversations with both cities. I might add, just as an example of the work that's been done since I was here last, for the city of Bellevue, 28 undeveloped parcels were identified for possible future residential development. Current zoning for those parcels is predominantly single-family. I'm skimming a little bit. Combined total area is 19.8 acres. Based on the density of five units per acre, there is a potential for development of 99 additional single-family residences. Based on the Renton School District student generation factor, for single-family residential units could generate 81 additional students. And based on the proposed fees and the currently existing fees, there is the potential for collection of $663,105 in impact fees. So, not insignificant. And again, we're pursuing that and the possibility.
Could you give the name and title for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm John Knudsen, Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations for the Renton School District.
Thank you.
Questions from other council members?
Mr. Person, I'm looking in your direction.
I guess I question why you wouldn't, because it takes time for you to get these fees through the council, why you wouldn't be researching Tuculpa's at this point? I mean, if they do a big plan, new development, you could miss out on the timing of getting fees.
We will be working with them, and I provided the information to Ms. Timmons for that report. And again, preliminary discussions with the city just indicate nothing in the development pipeline. But we'll continue that discussion with them.
I guess my concern is that could change tomorrow, and so I...
Understood.
I just think it's important, I mean, if I'm a developer or homeowner in Renton, in the city of Renton, I'm going to get ding this fee, but if I decide to build in Tuculpa, that ain't going to be that much cheaper for me to build theirs, so there's no, you know, it's hurting our people and actually hurting the school district because it's money that you're leaving on the table. I look at all those apartments out on Sunset Boulevard, Martin Luther King Way, that were built in the county, and it wasn't until now that they're all built that the school district has decided, well, we better go ask King County. I mean, you must have given up $400,000, $500,000 worth of fees out there. And I see the same thing happening in Tuculpa if you don't, if you don't do it. So, I guess, I wouldn't want you to come back to the council in another year and not have have gone for impact fees in those places.
Understood. And if I may, I would probably characterize that information as a prioritization. I think we'll get there.
Okay. What's the wish of the council? We've got various committee reports. Let's say we hold it over. I've got that we pass Isaguas and Kent. I've got that we pass all three. I've got, we can do anything we want.
Let me know.
We've always looked at these, it's an unfortunate quirk in the law that I don't like. We don't get any of the money that is collected for these impact fees. And I'm all for education, that's not a, but we're the ones that have to levy them and pass them through, and we even have to pay forward interest on the money if we hold it. Even today, we pay interest to the school district. And yet, we, and we don't get it, but if we don't, the law needs to be changed so that the school district can collect it directly rather than having to go, come to us for this fees. And that has nothing to do with you and I, but it's just a quirk in the law that really bothers me that we're looking like the bad guys in this. And, but yet, with the educational needs that we have in this state, I mean, you can't pass, you can't pass this up. So, I look at this so much differently than I do our other impact fees that I would be for passing it on a separate. But I won't have heartburn either way because we continue to collect them as we go on.
I just want to clarify. It reminded me when we had those Boy Scouts there the last time we had a presentation, and I took the parents and the kids back. Well, one dad asked me, when am I going to have to start paying that impact fee? And I just need, I just want to make sure that the people listening understand, this is on new development. It's not something that if you're living in the city of Renton in a home or an apartment or condo, is going to be levied against you. It's when a new home or apartment or condo is built, then that's when those people that buy that piece of property, this impact fee is in your total purchase price. So, I just wanted to make that clear. I was thinking through.
Good point.
Rich?
Excellent point. Terry?
It seems to me that you've got our message from our last meeting, that, you know, many of us on the council feel that Renton is overly burdened with the Renton School District fees and that the other communities aren't paying their own way.
Loud and clear.
Okay. I thought you got that message. So, I think it would be, you know, stressed, you know, before I could vote for this, is that that will continue to be a priority with the school district?
You have my commitment and the commitment of the superintendent.
Thank you.
So, my concern is that when we get to the other impact fees, that these fees will be brought back by opponents, proponents, or whatever, saying, I've got, how can you be raising these others? I'm already paying X type thing, which doesn't, neither here nor there, as Don said, they're already being collected. And so, like I said, that's my concern, but it's not anything I'm wedded to. I'm hearing the wish is just to approve all three, Don, or do you want to hold off on Renton?
No, I would hold all three. I mean, I wouldn't hold, I would pass all three. I mean, I believe his commitment. I think the message has taken us a couple of years to get through, but it's gotten through.
Obviously, you know, we would vote on this out on the floor during the meeting, but the committee report that we'll propose will be, the committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes in capital facilities plans for three school districts within the city of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $3,568, a decrease of $240, for each new single-family home on behalf of the Isaguas School District. And continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District. And collect the requested impact fee of $6,392, an increase of $82, for each new single-family home and $1,274, an increase of $16, for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton School District. Committee further recommends the ordinance regarding this matter be prepared and presented for first reading. Not hearing any strong opposition or amendments to it, I will ask Madam Clerk to present this during our meeting. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, committee of the whole is...
With that, committee of the whole is adjourned. We will reconvene at seven o'clock for council meeting.